Okay, at this time, we are going to call the board meeting to order. Today is September 11th, 2017. We don't want to go backwards. All board members are present except for Tam Agosty-Giesler, who is on vacation. And so I am filling in as president tonight. I'm assuming that's the reason you guys are all here is to see me in action.[48.12][48.12](laughter) So, at this time, Kathleen, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
Yeah, we are.
So, we do have a choir here tonight. They're going to sing the National Anthem. It's West High School Choir directed by Gabrielle Windermeyer. I hope I said that right, Gabrielle. But I just wanted to make a brief statement before that. So, of course, today, we remember 9/11. And 16 years ago tonight, millions of Americans went quietly to bed with no thought that the next morning their lives would change forever. That night, hundreds packed flight bags they would never or they would not live to open. Thousands slept with loved ones for the last time. One never knows what each new day has in store. Let us live every day to the fullest and never miss the chance to let those dearest to us know of our love for them. And so tonight, if you have someone in your life that you love, tell them, "We will never forget. Remember 9/11." That was terrific. Thank you so much for being a part of our evening. At this time, we do have a safety minute that we are doing now at every board meeting. Sorry, I need my glasses. So, thank you for being here tonight. Restroom's at the far end of the hall, directly across from the atrium. An automatic electronic defibrillator, AED, is located across the hall in a white box. Hopefully, we won't need that tonight. First aid kit is mounted on the wall by the second exit. We do not conduct evacuation drills during our meetings. If an alarm sounds or an alert is announced, please begin to take safe action immediately. In the event we have to evacuate this building, the four exit doors are located on my left, your right, and all have a lit exit sign over them. Once you enter the atrium, proceed quickly along the safest route to a door leading out of the building. If you do not have a vehicle here, or it is unsafe to enter your vehicle, you need a place to wait for help. We have designated the parking lot next to the gas station as our rally point. If you see something that is dangerous, we encourage you to speak up and clearly alert the room of the danger you see. We encourage everyone to quickly begin to take safe action. Information will be provided throughout the event as available, so everyone can best decide the safest action to take, given the current situation. So, for the month of September, colder temperatures are coming. Prepare your cars and your children appropriately. This is a good spot for promoting coats for kids or similar programs. Car idling next to schools is not allowed, as the exhaust gases can enter the building and affect our students. If you have to stop your vehicle next to a building, please turn it off until you're ready to move it. Decreased daylight means children along roads are harder for drivers to see. And please mark coats and backpacks with reflective material for their safety. Drivers should always remember to always drive with their headlights on at all times. Okay, so much for that. So, we have our student representative. Kaylee, if you'd like to read our opening statement, please.
Okay. We want to welcome you to our school board meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district, with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. As partners, we will respect your time and make this meeting as effective and efficient as possible. If you are unable to physically be present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune into the municipality Anchorage's Channel 9 to watch any school board meeting. Meetings are also streamed live and available on demand via the ASD website. Recordings of meetings are available on YouTube through the agenda. To access, find the desired meeting in Board Docs and click the "Watch Video" button. Recordings are timestamped to the agenda for easy access to closed captioning in compliance with Section 508 of the Rehabilitation Act. The primary purpose of the regular business meeting of the Anchorage School Board is to recognize excellence, receive reports, approve policies, and contracts, as well as decide on the rules and processes followed by the board to facilitate orderly decision-making. The rule is, the role is to govern, not to solve management issues. My name is Kaylee Spencer, and I am the student representative to the board. I was elected to serve through the ASD Student Advisory Board. Although my votes are only advisory, I offer a student voice to this body.
Thank you. If we could have approval of the agenda, please. Second. Are there any revisions to the agenda? Okay. At this time, we're going to open it up to public testimony on non-agenda and non-action items. When I call your name, if you'll come up to the front podium here. So, the board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value the public comment, as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table up front and center with two seats and microphones available for your testimony. When I call your name, you have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when the time appears on the screen to your left and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. When the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. Additionally, it's not our practice that the board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to call two names, and one can take one seat and one can take the other seat. The first one is Kenny Brewer, and the second name is Philip Walters. And Kenny, you'll go first, and if you'll state your name first.
Hello, my name is Kenny Brewer. I am a previous Chugiak High School grad. I worked as a substitute teacher last year, as well as a cross-country running and ski coach. I am currently a dietetic and nutrition intern through UAA, and that's mainly why I'm here today. I'm just trying to raise some awareness on eating disorders, particularly in athletes. Just want to say that it's not common knowledge that one in 10 female collegiate athletes suffer from a clinically diagnosed eating disorder. It is the, has the highest death rate for any mental illness, and that's including depression. So, by 10 years, about 10% of diagnosed patients will have passed away, and by 20 years, 20% will have passed away. And 50% of patients never recover from the disorder. So, only one in 10 individuals actually ever received treatment, and mainly that's due to just unawareness and insufficient resources. And this treatment can lower mortality rates all the way down to 2% to 3%. Highest cases of the disorder are seen in 15- to 24-year-olds, and 15% of total cases are in males, actually, which is often goes unnoticed. And so, sports are often both a gateway and an outlet. Excessive exercise can be used both as a type of binging for calories, and then it's also a gateway mostly seen in sports like cross-country running and gymnastics, where body size is stressed more importantly than other things for improvement in that sport. So, just here to kind of ask what the school board is doing and offer some ideas. There's what's called a weight concern survey, and it's only about five questions long. And I would just like to urge the school board to consider either tapping that on to the end of the concussion kind of baseline test, or making it part of the yearly physical and making it a mandatory yearly assessment, just because studies show that the sooner you catch an eating disorder, not only will it be cured more quickly, but it'll be cured more fully, and more cases can be cured the sooner they're caught. So, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you so much. Before you start, Philip, if I could have Laura Wynn come up, please. Philip, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. My name is Philip Walters. I'm in my 13th year of teaching, all of those years in northeast Anchorage. I come before you tonight to ask you to stop, to take a breath, to realize that while we have many things on our plates, many challenges current and upcoming, we are quite frankly trying to do too much with too little. We have too little time, too little funding, too little available energy to try to continue to solve the troubles of Anchorage schools all at once. I've heard stories of first graders being expected to complete a 21-page test with essay questions in the first month of school. How many tests do our children take every year? Do they all serve a unique purpose? Are they necessary? In addition to our rigorous curriculum, we are asked to implement conscious discipline, champs, foundations, breakfast in the classroom, and now capturing kids' hearts into our everyday routine. In my school this year, we were told to come in two days early to receive training on capturing kids' hearts, while at the same time implementing a block schedule we'd never tried before, and MTSS classes we'd never taught before, and in some cases have yet to be trained in. We expect sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to sit through an 85-minute class period in an attempt to shove more information into them, since the 45-minute periods that were already taxing their attention span apparently weren't sufficient.[864.44][864.44](laughter) In the middle schools, without block scheduling, they have an eight-period day every day with 40-minute classes, so by the time the lesson has begun, it is time to move on to the next class. Neither option is ideal. What happened to the idea of the middle school model? Middle school's a unique beast that no one seems to understand, except middle school teachers. So, why not listen to middle school teachers when they tell you that the middle school model is the best way to teach our students? We have less selective teachers, which means we have less selective course offerings, but we still have to put the students somewhere. So, we have high school art classes that have 37 students in a small classroom, cutting metal, or firing clay pots, or doing any number of other things that absolutely must be done in a small setting for the safety of the class. It is not a matter of if someone's going to get hurt, but a matter of when. We have parents and students who cannot know what is going on with their grades or properly communicate with the schools, because the rollout of the new Q system has been so piecemeal, so fraught with technical issues, that even (applause), that even the most technologically savvy teachers are pulling their hair out. With little to no training on cue, we are trying to do what is district mandated but not district-supported. Finally, we have lost quality educators who love our students, who reach our students, who inspire students to be better human beings, because they're unsure if they will continue to have a job in the district. We lost teachers last spring due to layoffs, while many of those teachers came back, many did not. Who would want to stay in a district where you can pour your heart and your soul into your students, into your work, into your classroom, and then be shown the door at the end of the year with the oversimplified excuse of, "I'm sorry, the money's just not there, and it's not our fault"? When ASD directors are getting pay raises of 20% to 50% to bring their jobs up to industry standards (applause), where are those same standards to attract and retain quality teachers, the frontline workers, the people who interact directly with our children every day? So, I ask you to simply stop, take a breath, sit back, and contemplate which of these truly makes a difference in the lives of our students. Thank you.[974.56][974.56](applause)
Deana Mitchell, if I could have you come on up. And Laura, you can begin.
Good evening, Dr. Bishop, members of the board. I'm Laura Wren. This is my 18th year of teaching and my 16th year teaching math at Greening Middle School. There's a saying that a teacher's working environment is the student's learning environment. That's my focus for tonight. Teachers in the Anchorage School District give 100% to their students, day after day. You know that even though our contract is for 182 days, teachers work before the school year starts, setting up our classrooms and planning lessons. You know, we work late at home and on weekends. You know we have only three paid days of personal leave. So, even though school breaks are not paid days, many of us use those days to prepare lessons and to grade papers. Otherwise, why did we want grades due after winter and spring breaks? You know that teachers often come in sick, because 13 days of sick leave isn't always enough when you have children at home. You know that despite all of the problems teachers have been dealing with in the start of the school year, as was so aptly described by the teacher before me, whose name I apologize for forgetting, you know that teachers continue to shut their door and give their students 100%. I invite any of you to contact me. You are more than welcome to come shadow me and see what a day in middle school is like now. However, it doesn't feel as if the district administration is giving us 100%. We hear reports of people being told, "If you don't like the direction we're taking, you should leave." What we should hear is, "We want to improve the way the ASD educates our students and runs our business side. Please be a part of the solution." Instead, we have coworkers and colleagues across the district saying this. "This is the year I'm going to retire," not because they're done teaching, but because they don't feel that their expertise is valued. Teachers want the best for our students, and we want to work with the best staffs. We want a work environment that recognizes our primary purpose is to teach kids. And we want to feel as if we aren't the only ones giving 100%. Thank you for your time.[1137.01][1137.01](applause)
Katie Chandler, if you could come on up. Katie, I think I'm saying it right. K-A-I-T-Y. And Deana, if you'd like to go ahead and get started.
Good evening, Dr. Bishop, and good evening, school board members. My name is Deana Mitchell, and I'm with Great Alaska Schools. At Great Alaska Schools, our mission is all about every student having access to a quality public education, as you all know. We know that teachers play a fundamental role in delivering a quality education. And so, for us, what is more important, most important, is that we have a landscape in Alaska where good teachers want to come and good teachers want to stay, where good teaching behavior is taught at our universities and through strong professional development, and where good teaching behavior is supported and rewarded. There is a national shortage of school teachers, as you know. The state of Alaska is in a recession with the highest unemployment rate in the nation, and with a group of legislators who, over the last three years, have not been able to settle on how to resolve important long-term fiscal issues, causing great uncertainty among teachers looking after their own personal career and long-term fiscal security. The teachers most likely to leave the state in search of other opportunities, we fear, are the very best teachers that we cannot afford to lose. We ask the ASD leadership to keep teacher retention at the top of their thinking as we continue through this difficult period. Thank you so much.[1245.52][1245.52](applause)
Oh, your daughter can sit by you.
She's giving me the thumbs up over there.
Oh, okay. Will you want to sit by mom? Come on up, sweetie.
This is my daughter.[1266.58][1266.58](laughter)
And Will.
Hi. So, my name is Katie Chandler. Is it okay if I go?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Katie Chandler. I have a wonderful second grader at the Anchorage School District. One of the things that I was concerned about when school started is I noticed that she was bringing home lunches with a couple of bites eaten of her food, and I thought, hmm, this seems rather odd for a child with a pretty voracious appetite. I asked her what the problem was, and she stated that she did not have enough time allotted. I know my child, she's pretty chatty, so I figured I would go and see for myself, and sure enough, there was not nearly enough time allotted for the lunchtimes. It appears as though they have 20 minutes that are allotted to the children in the second grade for lunch. However, five minutes of it is typically spent getting to the lunchroom, picking up the lunches, getting settled into their positions, then they undergo about 10 minutes of a silent lunch with clapping to necessitate whether or not they're adhering to the silent policy, and then five minutes of cleanup at the end. All said and done, they have about 10 minutes to eat. I do find this concerning, and it has been corroborated with some of the research that I've done. A Harvard study proved that children who have 20 minutes or under have a larger degree of food waste. They have 12% less veggies consumed at the end of their meal. They have 13% less of their entrees and 10% less of their milk. They are also 13% less likely to select a fruit during their meal. I noticed a lot of the children who were throwing their food away, and I think that it is worth noting that there are several Title I schools in the district, and that children from low-income families in particular rely on school meals for up to half of their daily energy intake. I think that allowing for substantial time for them to consume this meal is essential. I also believe that we should look at the fact that hunger can cause learning deficits, behavioral issues, and susceptibility to illness from long-term hunger. I think any of us could agree that if we feel hungry, we don't feel like we're on our mental A-game. Food waste is up. They're eating in winter gear theoretically in the wintertime. Right now, they're eating in their coats as they go directly to recess. And if they've not had enough time to restore the energy by feeding their bodies, they're depleting even more going to research directly after. So, 25 million kids are considered overweight or obese. I believe that implementing a policy that requires that these children be quiet and eat as quickly as possible will contribute to that issue, and will contribute to unhealthy eating relationships and patterns being established from a very young age. I believe that this is something that we should absolutely look at. The solution, I do not have, but I think that it's a conversation point worth talking about. 35 million children eat school lunch every day. 11 million also eat breakfast there as well. Lower test scores are noted in children that are hungry as well. And I think that just socially, there is something to be said about being able to converse with one another while we're having a meal. That's one of the joys of being an adult and going out with family, is having time around the table to converse about your day and about your food, and not being able to do that as children, we're not really setting them up very well for that as a social activity. So, I urge you to think about extending lunchtimes for these children, allowing them ample time to eat, and also implementing snacks in the classroom again. Thank you.[1468.63][1468.63](applause)
Thank you. Tony Bickert? I'm probably not saying that right. Forgive me. And the next person is Linda Rivers, I believe? Did I say that right? It's cursive, I can't read it.[1496.15][1496.15](laughter) So, Tony, if you'd like to start.
Sure. My name's Tony Bickert, and I'm a 712 special education life skills teacher at Whaley School. And I want to talk about a student I saw at the Walmart parking lot the other day. His name's Edward, and I had him as a seventh grader, but when I saw him at Walmart, some years had passed, I was thinking he's about 21-years-old. I called to him from my car. "Edward!" He's like, "Mr. Tony, where's your truck?" And it didn't surprise me he would remember that truck. He came to my classroom like a seventh grader. And like all my students, Edward had a learning disability coupled with at least one behavioral disorder. And that was fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, which is very common in Alaska, which affects a part of the brain that allows most of us to process our anger before we get aggressive, not our students. During his years at Whaley, his early years, he had his share of aggressive outbursts. But then our jobs to teach through and around those rough spells, and Edward, he was beginning to learn the skills, the life skills necessary to manage his aggression, while also learning all the academic skills he would need to succeed out there, and social skills. But you can't teach through absenteeism. It's another big deal with this faction of our students. If he was going to be absent one more day, he was going to have to re-enroll. And I've seen this before. This is when we lose the students. So, that morning, he was in 10th grade, it was about four years ago, I went to my principal and got the okay. My teacher assistant and I climbed up into my truck. Edward must have thought that he was dreaming when he saw me in his living room, you know? And he kept that surreal look on him all the way to school, sitting between me and Valerie, my TA, in my truck. I actually let him shift while I held the clutch down, but that's off the record.[1640.01][1640.01](laughter) Anyway, long story short, he kept coming back after that, and that what it takes attitude you need at these schools. He got a job, he graduated. He lives at, still lives at his sister's living home, and he's holding down a job. And there he was, two years later, in the parking lot. "What happened to your truck?", he said again. He came over. "Hey, gas hog man, I had to downsize," Edward. He said, "Oh, well, nice car." But I knew he missed that truck. I'm like, "Hey, why don't you start saving for a truck?". I couldn't believe I could say that. And as he pulled away, and he didn't pull away, but he was in the passenger seat of his staff's car, it occurred to me, I can't be picking up and leaving the building to go pick up a student in my pickup anymore. Class sizes have gotten so huge, well, they've increased steadily. I don't want to use hyperbole. And staff, either staying the same or going down. You know, it's all I can do now to keep track of who's present, let alone think about who's absent. Is this the new normal? I don't even know if this is negotiable, but isn't this student-centered? You know, is this trend going to continue while it reverses? What's the balance? Who's watching this? You know, Edward, he doesn't know what to do. He doesn't need to worry anymore, but I have other students. I don't know, but I only believe this. If we're not debating how to divide school funding on a student-first platform premise, if we're focusing on raises before that, if we're focused on benefits before that, and I'm wearing purple too, or fear of litigation, which is the new thing, if we're giving our dollars for that first before this, then we're failing our students. Edward did his job, now let's do ours. Thank you.[1775.72][1775.72](applause)
I'd like to take this time to just state that Tam Agosty-Giesler has joined us on the phone. And our next person is, it looks like Barb Clark. Is that right? And you can go ahead and start.
And you can go ahead and start.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is my 21st year in the Anchorage School District. I am a highly qualified certified teacher. Every year, it seems that more is being placed upon teachers from the ASD, and it is becoming overwhelming, to say the least. This is the first time I've ever done anything like this and come before you, but I feel so passionate about it. What I am asked to do as a teacher, I wouldn't do with or to my students. That is giving too much information and expecting it to be put into application form in a short period of time. That, to me, is not being considerate, respectful to my learning as an individual. Anchorage School District is asking us in all of our trainings as educators to be understanding and caring with our students when we teach, so that they can better learn. Individuals need only so much information at a given period of time. Students need to be trained and have a period of time for the information to adhere to their brain. If this is true, then why is the ASD not allowing the same process to happen to us as teachers? Teachers are just as important as who we teach. We have to be whole, rested, enthusiastic, prepared, and so many other things in order to deal with the rigors of the daily classroom. ASD keeps asking teachers to do more and more. More for less is not working for fellow teachers. It does not give you a bang for your buck. In fact, it does just the opposite. A learning curve for teachers is being professional and having those specialized expectations and objectives. This is expected of us as adult learners. But when you are inundated with more than a normal human being is expected to handle, it becomes deplorable. I'll start with this year. I participated in registration so I could help the community. I set up my own classroom many days before I was required. I took the two days of ASLAC training. I took two days that was required of KIL. The ASLAC training was a learning curve. The KIL was a learning curve. Then we began August 17th and 18th, when school began. That was another learning curve. Then we were asked to view our own three hours of domestic violence and sexual abuse, another learning curve. Then we were asked to learn a new system for grading Q, a definite learning curve. No training, just do it and go, and make sure you have grades posted your first week of class. Then we're asked, K through two teachers to learn a new English Language Arts Sengage National Geographic reading curriculum, a new learning curve. Then we are asked to incorporate the new building learning coach into our daily plans, a new learning curve. What educators need is simple. We need time to process new information. This is essential for us to be effective teachers in the classroom, to teach the curriculum with, your word, fidelity. Give us time to process and remember that too much is simply too much. Let's remember what they do on airplanes. The analogy is, adults, put your oxygen mask on before you help kids. Teachers have no oxygen masks this year. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to apologize because I can't read this name at all, but you're right after Barb Clark.
L.J.
Is it L.J. or L.S.? Oh, okay. Sorry.
Hey, Barb, you want to go ahead and start?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bishop, Madam President, and members of the board. My name is Barb Clark, and I have been teaching English at West High for 17 years. As you know, West staff was invited back a couple of days early this year to take the training in Capturing Kids' Hearts, in the Capturing Kids' Hearts program. We've been practicing it for three weeks or so now. Most aspects of it, honestly, are things that most of us had already been doing in one form or another all along. Reading students at the door, recapping our progress at the end of class, setting behavioral expectations early in the year. The thing that struck me as most useful and positive about Capturing Kids' Hearts, however, has been what the program calls the social contract. It's a series of four questions, the answers to which are arrived at collaboratively and posted in each class. How do you want to be treated by me? How do you want to treat each other? How do you think I want to be treated by you? And how do we want to treat each other when there's conflict? Students' answers were, for the most part, thoughtful, compassionate, and useful. Put yourself in other people's shoes. Listen to understand rather than just to respond. Be open-minded, be respectful. Remember what's important about why we're all here. It struck me that the guidelines that my students were coming up with for how we might treat each other bore a broad similarity to what I'd heard about another innovative district program, interest-based bargaining. Listen to understand rather than just to respond. Put yourself in other people's shoes. Be open-minded, be respectful, and remember what's important about why we're all here. I don't have, and at this point, I really shouldn't have, a lot of information about exactly how things are going at the bargaining table. But I am hopeful that those guiding principles are steering things. Because Anchorage students deserve a school board and a teaching staff that expect the best from each other and expect the best for each other. Anchorage students deserve, for the adults who administer and who provide their educational experiences, to come to an agreement about how best to do so in a way that models for our students and for the public, not just savvy bargaining skills and the ability to conclude a deal that everybody can live with. They deserve to see a board and a teaching staff who are creating community, working together to form a contract that board, administration, staff, and even students can point to with civic pride as a model for how citizenship in a collaborative learning community ought to look and ought to feel.
Could you spell your name before you begin? I'm sorry, your name?
Sparrow, like a bird.
Oh, there's somebody before you. We've missed somebody. Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All right, so if we get through this list and you haven't been called, stand up. So, the next one's going to be Susan Ritter.
Whoever signed up in between you and Barb.
Yeah.
My name's Lisa Sparrow, and I teach a K-1 class in Anchorage. I'm here to comment on the district's decision to replace Zangle with Q and in the K through two, replace the Hooten Mifflin language program with Reach for Reading. Teachers were not provided with adequate training for either of these programs. Additionally, the Reach for Reading curriculum requires excessive and developmentally inappropriate testing, leading to student frustration, confusion, and feelings of failure. The Zangle and now Q tool is used constantly by teachers throughout the day for attendance, parent communication, student health concerns, and contact information, grading, and report cards. Understanding how to use Q is essential for recording student progress and communicating with families. Because Q is a vital tool, teachers have been forced to take time to learn it, mostly on our own time. This takes time away from the classroom planning that supports student learning. Like Q, the training for the Reach for Reading curriculum was minimal and is requiring a great deal of teacher time to figure out. But my main issue with Reach for Reading and the district's implementation of it is the excessive developmentally inappropriate testing. I've been using Reach for Reading now for three weeks, and I'm concerned about the testing the program recommends and which ASD requires us to do. I'm teaching first graders, six-year-olds, and I'm expected to give them a weekly spelling test as well as a weekly unit test. These tests are in addition to AIMS testing three times a year and a monthly Go Math Chapter Test. That can be up to 10 tests in a month. We were told to give a beginning-of-the-year test, which consisted of four one-page reading passages, followed by comprehension questions. None of my six-year-old students could read the passages nor any of the questions. We were told to give them adequate time, so they sat for 20 minutes with each passage and tried to make sense of words they had no way of reading. Evidently, the district got a lot of complaints because we were allowed to discontinue the test halfway through. Unfortunately, the weekly unit tests include, that what we're required to do, include more of the exact same style of reading passages, so this testing, which proves at this point in the year, provides minimal information, will continue. The weekly spelling tests have caused tears and stress for students. At my school in the past, first graders didn't start spelling tests until later in the year. But this year, the district is requiring weekly grades in all subject areas. Today, I had to test six-year-olds on the correct use of A or AN, using the rule of A goes with consonants and an AN with vowels. Do they really need to know this in first grade? Assessments are done to see where a child is, see if they are changed in informed teaching. If assessments don't provide this information, they're a waste of time. So far, I've spent a lot of time testing, and the results have provided minimal information about student abilities. In closing, my hope is the district, while we think their policy on testing and scale back the number of tests children are given, additionally, I hope someone will look at the material children are being tested on and determine if it is developmentally appropriate.
So, that's the end of the list. So, if you signed up and I didn't call your name, when Susan gets through testifying, come up and take her seat.
Good evening, everyone. My name, Madam President, school board members, Dr. Bishop. My name is Susan Ritter. I am starting my 11th year of teaching in Special Education Life Skills. The first year this year is in the high school. Prior to that, I've been in elementary. I am a proud graduate of the Gen Ed to SPED program, which now has a fancy name called the GETS program. And when I graduated from that program, I had a lot of support, which I think has, through anecdotal comments from people in the program, may have gone away. And so, I am going to speak to the need for hiring qualified and supported special ed teachers. We are an interesting group of people who choose to work in an environment that has a lot of variety to it, to say the least. But the Gen Ed program, the Gen Ed to SPED program, in the past had, I had a mentor for a full year who did my paperwork, who set up my IEPs, who told me how to do it this particular way. And I know that there are some still having mentors, but I think two-years would have been a lovely time for me to have gotten myself under the program following what the school was requesting that I do and what my expectations of myself were. Teachers in special education work very hard for their students, just as any other teacher that I'm sitting among do on a daily basis. We want the best for our students. We want to see them grow, and their growth is miniscule to those of the Gen Ed population. If I can see a student reading in four-years or five-years that I've had them, that is huge progress for me. And I think that's important, that that be recognized and, you know, remind you of the population that we work with in this area. I ask that you listen to your special ed teachers when they ask for help. They're not just asking because they've got nothing else to do. They're asking because they want program and training that is appropriate for their school, their population. And the curriculum that we have to use is okay. It's a supplement to other educational curriculum that I use in my classroom. But I think spending three-hours of professional development on the unique learning system, which, again, I like it, but it's, I could have done more with my three-hours than relearn it, because I've been doing it for 10-years. But there are new teachers that need that experience. Lastly, I just want you to know that our teachers work in special ed and in Gen Ed, work very hard for all of their students. We look for progress, and we respect our students and their abilities. We're not under the same apparent pressure of our Gen Ed students, but we are still looking to make our progress. Please support your teachers. Please listen to us when we ask for professional development that will really be beneficial to us. Help us with our behavior management. There are lots of other programs that are available to us. Please let us use those. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan.
Madam President, school board members, Madam Superintendent, I'm Tom Claymire. I'm a 20-year veteran in the Anchorage School District and currently serving as a full-time released president of AEA. I miss the classroom, but I not only get to advocate now for one set of students, which is an ever-increasing larger set of students for each teacher, but now for the 49,000-plus in the district, in addition to advocating for 3,200-plus educators in the district that are doing the work on the ground. These are the experts in the classroom, and their input is vital. They have to be heard if we're going to implement new programs, and the feeling is that we're not. I can't help but hearken back to the beginning of the school year. Dr. Bishop used the analogy of an iceberg several times in various settings. An iceberg's beautiful. An iceberg is massive. A glacier, right, is constantly moving. It's changing the landscape. But by this time, several weeks in, I can't help but think of the Titanic. And I apologize for that, but we've got 3,200 people on the boat saying, "Turn the ship." We've been bargaining for two-years, and we've been talking. We've been talking about all of these issues, and we've had great conversations with district's leadership. We want to be partners in making those change, but the board doesn't manage. It governs, and the governance that we would like to see is to stop, that we have too much that is distracting from our job. We simply want to teach students. We need time to teach. Students need time to learn. Earlier in the work session, the finance work session, you guys were brainstorming different audits that we ought to do, and I have a suggestion for that. We need to do a time audit to see how much of what teachers are doing is directly related to their curriculum and instruction, and how much is other stuff that we're required to do. A time audit, how much is lost in instruction to testing. We need to do a program audit to evaluate the programs that we have, decide which ones are keeping and which ones are not effective and we need to stop doing. We're really good at adding programs because collectively, all of us in this room want to fix the problem. So, I don't blame, there's no mal-intent there. We have new programs to fix the problem, but adding more and more and more, whether they're effective or not, and never taking away is not going to work. Thank you very much.
I have the spotlight. Wow. So, hi, my name is Nancy Neal. Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Bishop. Like I said, my name is Nancy Neal. I have been a teacher for the Anchorage School District for 18-years. I have been a Raven, which is a Tyson. I have been a Wildcat at Abbott Loop. I am proud to be a Hawk at Hanshu Middle School. It is an awesome school. As a parent and a grandparent, my sons went through Ocean View Elementary. My sons graduated from South, and my grandson is now going to Clatt, and he is a Puma. I am here because I am a concerned citizen and an employee of ASD. The time is now for the Anchorage School District, the Anchorage community, and the state of Alaska to listen to educators. Teachers go into education because they care about children, and they want the best for their students. Teachers deserve a contract that will pay them what they're worth, pure and simple. In all my years with ASD, I have never seen the morale so low. In all my years with ASD, I have never seen the morale so low. A 3, a 0 percent three-year contract is not acceptable. My colleagues, pure and simple, are dedicated to children and spend over six days every day with each student that attend ASD. But that is only a part of their day. The countless hours spent at home working and going back to school without being compensated is part of that process. Why do we do this? We do it because we care about kids. Destination 2020 is a lofty goal. Test scores for ASD students have increased over the last several years. This is due to the dedicated teachers in the trenches. Graduation rates have increased and attendant rates have increased, too. In the ever-changing world of the education, ASD teachers are putting in more time for less pay, although they have risen to the task they have been asked to do. On any given day, a teacher is an instructor, a cheerleader, a social worker, a role model, an assessment guru, and a coach. I went to a tennis match after I taught at middle school, and I'm here tonight. The skill set of ASD is outstanding. Anchorage and ASD have asked for more from their teachers, and they have complied. Other issues that affect schools are the current layoffs of assistant principals, security guards, and paraprofessionals. According to Destination 2020, 100% of students are to feel safe at school. With these layoffs, it has pushed teachers and principals to the brink. Just last month, police received a raise while crime rates have increased. However, test scores have gone up in ASD, and we are, the district is proposing a three-year 0% contract. That is an injustice. Current decisions by the district have caused much consternation. The rollout of the Q system with very little or no in-service, the new K-2 nonfiction reading initiative, and the new eight-period advisory schedule in MTSS. When a first grader cries because of an assessment is too advanced, this does not make sense. When a second grader has to write and edit a paragraph without prior instruction, this is a mistake. When middle school students are stressed out because of a difficult schedule to understand, this is not good planning. When principals are frustrated with the lack of direction and on the practice, it affects the morale of the staff. Perhaps if teachers had more input in the process, the school year would have started better, and there would not be so much stress involved. Also, current administrators have received pay increases approved by the board, up to 30%, in order to keep up with the lower 48. Teachers need to be compensated to keep up with that demographic, too, the lower 48. A study, a study done by the state of Alaska stated that Anchorage district teachers would need a 10% increase to keep up with teachers in the lower 48. So the 3% zero, the three-year 0% contract to teachers is unacceptable. Teachers want the best for students, therefore, it is imperative that teachers are paid fairly. The current contract proposal is inadequate. We want the best for students. We want the best for the district. We want to be treated accordingly and like professionals. Thank you very much.
At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? We do have another opportunity at the end of the meeting, but is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Okay, we're going to move forward then. And we do not have a military report this evening, so Dr. Bishop, if you want to move forward with your superintendent update?
Sure, thank you. At this time, we are going to do a continuation of the work session bus barn updates. We're going to have about 10 minutes to finish the presentation, and I'd ask that Tom Roth come forward and Tom, new Tom. Help me with your last name?
Feniseth.
Feniseth. I was about to say Leniseth, but it's an F.
Close enough.
So thank you, Dr. Bishop, and through the board president. We're going to pick up and transition straight into the description of the site and the options. I'm passing over to Mr. Tom Feniseth.
Okay, so picking up from where we were last, we're talking about the new Totem site. And can we bring up the slides again, please? I'll drive on from here without the slides. I've got some, oh, there we go. Okay, great. So this is the proposed Totem site for the new bus transportation facility. Let me quickly orient you to the map here. This is the Totem Theater. That is McDonald's, and you have Sisitna Elementary to the north and Cars. So you have different neighborhoods surrounding it. This neighborhood here is a little older with other more transient neighborhoods to the east and the south. Next slide, please. So these are the options we considered. All of them look at three different areas. What was best for transportation ops, the impact to surrounding communities, and the impact on any future elementary school, which the site was originally designed to house both an elementary school and a middle school. So looking at all the sites, they're all pretty much similar, but we ended up with option three. Go to the next slide, please. Option three B, because there were some modifications to it, tended to be the best site for the new proposed student transportation facility, mainly because it would be a new facility, which would be more efficient. It would be built at no cost to ASD, and there would be no additional operating transportation costs compared to the current site. And also, this configuration, 3B, would have less impact on the surrounding areas and communities.
Can I ask a question? What are the red lines?
That's the proposed site. That's the current plat. So we still have a bit of work to do. I'm going to turn that over to Tom Roth, who will talk about matters pending.
If I might just, to state upfront, for all the positives, we recognize that there still is work ahead, and we are not asking the board for assistance on this, but it's really intended to provide information so the board is aware that we are still working matters with the municipality and with the developer. The first one being, and this has been brought up, is some concern about the potential remediation requirements on the current site. At this point, quite frankly, we have no idea what that would amount to in terms of the amount of contamination, if any. It has been remediated in the past, and then the responsibility to cover the cost to do that. The other, the other issues are really just for your awareness, there are some easement matters. One is a shared driveway with the Totem owners that needs to be negotiated, as well as an easement for a road on the north side of the lot. Again, we think we have sufficient space in the overall easement of 138 feet, again, to not have significant impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. But in this case, it would cross potentially the site that we've identified as for snow storage. And then lastly, there are some variances that we'll have to work through, planning and zoning, specifically one concerning the requirement to bury under or have underground storage tanks for fuel vice versa. We would advocate in that is to have above-ground storage tanks. And we also, again, as has been discussed previously, there are continuing evaluations and assessments. Traffic is one brought up, noise, and exhaust. Pause for any questions.
So I saw on the map that there was Class C wetlands. How much of the 25-acre parcel is wetlands, and what is the plan for that in regard to still having space for a school?
If you can, Mike, can you go back to the slide that depicts the four options? One more, there we go. And that, if you look, I'm sorry, and I'll pass off to Tom, but if you look in the upper-right corner of each of those options, with the exception of option four, that depicts the location for what could be a proposed elementary school site, so.
Could you go to the next slide, please? So I'll point it out here, there's a Class C wetlands here. So the site we chose, 3B, actually doesn't even come close to touching that right now. So it is best for wetlands and keeping that there for use and drainage, so that's one of the reasons why we chose this particular option.
But I was talking in regard to the potential school site.
The potential school site, which, if you go back to the last one, so this is 3B here, the wetlands is still pretty much intact out of the way. So that's a pretty much a summary of where we're at in terms of this project. The way ahead is, we've got a number of community engagements. The 21st is the Northeast Community Council, and then also moving into the construction season, and then finally, the move to happen in Springbake of 2019. The main thing what we're looking from the board is, is a way to move forward so we can get together, do a development agreement with the muni and move forward with the project.
Is part of our negotiations with the municipality, any kind of hold harmless clause for if we get lawsuits from the neighborhood regarding the air quality or noise, all those kinds of things that could happen? I see your 3B has a buffer. I mean, one thing about it, it's set back a little farther from the houses around there. That's really great, and I know you guys are working really hard on these issues, but I'd be very interested in being held harmless for any of the unforeseen impacts and issues that might arise.
Through the board president to member Donley, thank you. To answer your immediate question, no, that has not been a part of discussions at this point with the municipality, but we'll certainly enter that into the discussion. I think, I think the issue, frankly, for the district in our capacity supporting or working with the municipality is that ultimately, the agreement is between the municipality and the developer. So they're going to, whatever the language is, will ultimately be between the city and with the developer. And I would also, if I might, just to reiterate with regards to the development agreement, we will come back to the board and present that for review and approval.
So you're saying that we won't have any say in what the muni and the developer come up with as far as what's put on our property on the bus, for the bus barn?
To the president, no, I'm not saying that at all. In fact, the, within the development agreement, at least the draft that we have, the district will have approval of the design at 15%, 25%, and 35%, correct?
35, 65, 95.
So we absolutely have say in what goes on that land.
Okay. It just sounds like the agreement's between them, and if we didn't agree on something, it really wouldn't make any difference. It has to be board-approved? Well, I mean, we're going to approve to move forward. That's really all we have to approve, right?
The, so on the 25th, what we are going to come back to the board is a request to act on the resolution which, which will allow the administration to enter into negotiations on the development of a, of a development agreement, and we will bring that product back to the school board for review and approval.
Okay. And you, because I had this conversation, you do know that there's a stop sign there at 32nd. I didn't know if you guys had your traffic plan on these maps, like where the buses were going to be coming in and out of?
Yes, to the board president, that 32nd is one of the roads that we would be, or one of the access points that we would anticipate using for this proposed site.
And so, I mean, when we get into, when we get into further negotiations, such as, I mean, we're not talking a chain-linked fence, we're talking a buffer tight fence, and, I mean, those are things we'll be discussing, correct? Because these are the things that the community is going to be asking us.
Yes.
Okay.
So the plating change that you need to work through with either plating or P&amp;Z, and I'm not sure which, or if it's both, because potentially, it could be both, is not something that we would work through. You're saying that would be the municipality and the developer as well?
Right.
Yes.
President, that is correct.
And they'll still keep our interest with the need for a school site as a part of that process?
Through the board, absolutely.
I heard you look like you want to say something.
Thank you, Madam President. I was falling out of my chair. What I just wanted to elaborate on is that there is an extensive process that still remains as far as the city's processes. Urban Design Commission, that's where they'll tell us buffers, vegetated buffers, et cetera. And certainly, the plating. The reason it has to go to plating is because if you look at the red lines, there are actually two lots, and we cross over on one of the lots for this development, so that has to be eliminated, that line. So that's why plating. And then, the reason that it has to go to planning and zoning for rezone is right now it's zoned R2A, which if developed under the current zoning, would add hundreds of houses, okay, and many, many more traffic trips associated with that housing. So by going to PLI, Public Lands and Institutions, that certainly limits that. And the reason that we have to get a variance for the above-ground tanks, of course, is related to the zoning as well as Urban Design Commission. So we've got processes that still have to go through, and I think that Mr. Roth explained it very, very well, that we have a lot of issues that has to be negotiated in the development agreement with the city to protect the school district's interest, the residents' interest, and also the city's interests when you look at it as a whole. So there's a lot yet to be done, but when it's finally negotiated and we all agree, then it comes back to you to give the final say.
Madam Chair, just for the public's information, Mr. Vicalis is working for us. He's on our side.
Yes. That's the reason I asked him if he wanted to speak when he was falling out of his chair. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we have for the superintendent report, I'd like to call Kathy Clausen up. We do have information in regard to the PEAK school score reporting, and of course, PEAKs is the performance evaluation for Alaska schools. It is the new statewide assessment that is administered in the spring. The scores did arrive, and they were published at the state level, and then there's a process by which we discuss with, oh, yes, in a folder like this accompanies the presentation, by which we just really need to engage with schools and support schools in being able to speak with our families. This is the first year, and information in regard to the assessment as it hits our table, we then move it out to our schools and teachers who really are at the front line in discussing with parents. So I'm going to first turn it over to Kathy, and then as we get to the data part, I will take over. So Kathy?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, School Board, and Dr. Bishop. Thank you. So tonight, our learning objectives, we'll keep this brief, but we'll try to just do an overview so you have a basic understanding of what the PEAK scores mean and what we're going to be receiving here in the next couple of weeks. going to be receiving here in the next couple of weeks. We'll talk about the timeline, our plan for communication, and also training. I'll provide a quick overview of the PEAKS assessment, which is English Language Arts and Mathematics, and then also the Alaska Science Assessment for grades four, eight, and 10. We'll talk about the achievement level descriptors and the reporting categories, and then Dr. Bishop will go into more talk about the district level results. So, I thought we'd start out with a frequently asked question from the State of Alaska, and it often gets asked why PEAKS is important. And their messaging on that is because it provides information to parents, educators, the public communities about how our schools are performing. It helps data to help schools improve, and it gives information so that we can ensure equity in education for all students in the state. So, just take a moment and look at this model of a comprehensive assessment system, and you can see that formative assessments are at the bottom of the pyramid. In the middle, we have interim or benchmark assessments, and then at the top, we have summative. So, this just helps us understand and put PEAKS into some perspective. So, if we look at formative assessments, those are the bulk of how we look at students and how we measure student learning. And you can see that's at the bottom, it's the bigger component, and those are things that teachers and students do every day, those minute-to-minute, day-to-day checks for understanding, questioning skills, those strategies to make sure students are understanding skills and mastery of the information. Then in the middle, we have less frequently, those interim or benchmark assessments that we do three times a year, like AIMS Web or MAP Growth, and it allows teachers to have that time to look and see if what they're doing, those interventions are actually having an effect. Are we seeing some growth? Are we seeing gaps that come up? It offers another opportunity for teachers to actually maybe do some regrouping and help support students in that way. And then at the top, we look at summative assessments, those culminating assessments like PEAKS, or what we used to call SBAs, the Standards-Based Assessments, same thing, those state assessments. And the state calls them a thin layer, and it doesn't mean that's a bad thing, it just means it's less. We're not going to go from one summative assessment to the other and make that the only way that we measure student learning. We want that full comprehensive assessment system, that balanced approach to understanding what, how students learn. And the nice thing about like a formative assessment is it helps teachers actually look at pacing, intensity, changing course and direction. So, this just provides an overview of the timeline for PEAKS reports. As you remember, we gave PEAKS last spring. Because of standard setting, the results actually aren't available until now. So, you can see that on August 24th, we gave principals and district level staff an overview of PEAKS in preparation for the public release of the state, district, and school level data. That did not include student level data, that was the public reporting at the bigger level. This past general leadership meeting, we trained the principals on the student level data and provided them a module that they could take back to their buildings to actually train their staff. So, educators at the building will be trained in the next couple of weeks. For the internal posting, which will happen in our system called PULSE, that's our database for teachers and educators and principals to see student data on assessment, that will happen this Friday. And then on September 22nd, that'll be the date principals need to train their staff in preparation for parents to receive, receive results in Parent Connect. So, that'll be next Friday, the 22nd. So, this provides an overview of our communication plan. So, for the community and the public, we do have the public PEAKS webpage up and running. You can access it at the moment from the main district webpage. It does provide our district level reports. It also has the same timeline that you just saw on the last slide. We'll be updating it with how to access your child's scores in Parent Connect, how you can request a paper copy if you choose, and then we'll also make sure the parent guides are there along with translated copies of those. Right now, the frequently asked questions by the State of Alaska are posted there with translated versions of that now, so those are posted there for the community. For our internal communication piece, we have a Support Central site that is accessible using district credentials. It includes essentially the same information, it mirrors what's on the public website, in addition to a newsletter blurb that principals can add to their own school websites, and then a deeper, pretty big educator interpretive guide that teachers can use kind of in conjunction with the parent guides to help go deeper to helping parents understand those results. Training, again, we'll just talk about that quickly. We want training to be done by September 22nd in conjunction with parents getting those results so that teachers and parents can have good conversations about those scores. So, PEAKS is reported a little differently than AMP was or SBAs were. They'll be reported out with a scale score range from 400 to 600. It'll be divided into four levels of achievement, they're actually going back to a previous model with SBAs with advanced, proficient, below proficient, and far below proficient. And then a scale score of 500 will be median proficiency for both English Language Arts and Math. This gives a really quick overview of those four achievement levels. Just know that within the educator guide, they go deeper than that by grade level and content area. So, if you wanted to actually know what proficient meant for a third grader with English Language Arts, it would look a little different than it would for a 10th grader when you actually read those proficiency level or achievement level descriptors. The Alaska Department of Education went through a standard setting process this summer and decided on those achievement levels, cut scores, and those actually get approved by the State Board of Education, and that happened this summer as well. And that's partly why scores are delayed, so that process can be completed, they actually can generate the scores and get that information along with training out to districts. That did involve even teachers from across the state, including teachers in Anchorage that actually helped with that process. The one thing to please note is that science is still the same as it always has been, those standards haven't changed since 2006, and so they're reported out in the same way they have always been, on that scale from 100 to 600 with the proficiency being 300. And that's for grades four, eight, and 10. One little difference with PEAKS is that they have incorporated what's called reporting categories. Those of you familiar with SBAs, they used to call them strands. And essentially, all it is, is it's group of, groups of similar standards that they measure, and instead of giving it a score, they actually give it this symbol and do a comparison of students who score at the just proficient level or at 500. So, they report those out with either a better than, which is an up triangle, about the same as, which is an equal sign, or a down triangle, not as well as. So, instead of giving a score, because it's hard to actually give a score for that small of a number of items, they actually report it out that way. So, it's kind of a quick glance on how students do on those different groups of standards.
And I think this is where Dr. Bishop takes over. Sure. Okay. So, as we're talking about assessments, I'm going to go ahead and just share some information in regard to PEAKS and then address the elephant in the room in regard to other assessments and whatnot. So, the State of Alaska is considering PEAKS as the new baseline for future growth, meaning that they, they can't really interpolate them with AMP, and they're really more rigorous than SBAs. And so, the scores on SBAs, as you know, were about the opposite of this. Two-thirds of Alaska was proficient while one-third was not, and it really has flipped with PEAKS. And, and part of that is this is the assessment on the new standards, and some of the discussions we had tonight are specifically in this area of understanding and really come into grips with the new standards in regard to, we've pretty much up the ante on our kids. The Common Core as well as Alaska standards have moved approximately, in some categories, it's, it's looked at as about a year to 1.8 months, a year and eight months. So, if you take the mean, about a year and four months, we up the ante in the expectation. So, what we used to expect and what the Standards-Based Assessment looked at in second grade is now really in first grade by halfway through. So, the, the changes that we've been seeing in regard to inappropriateness, it, I mean, that, that's an opinion to have as educators across this nation. But needless to say, that is, those are the standards that are adopted by the state, and those are the assessed standards by which we're held accountable to just reporting. I don't know if consequences are going to have, so then we can have a debate whether we pay attention to them or not. But our community may weigh in on that at some time, whether they are more than they're asking for or not. But hence, we're in this, this limbo with changes not only in assessments, but curriculum that match, that need to match standards. We have not matched our curriculum prior to this time, really because the state didn't have it together either. I mean, we spent three years in an assessment cycle for which we have no data. So, you can see the anxiety and just, of any educator, I would say, in our state should be like, you know, it's, it's up to here with this, but this is our new now. And so, we have it, it is reliable, it's valid, unlike the other assessments for which the state had administered. So, with that, if you take a look, one-third of our students are proficient in those new standards. And for, we have lots of kids that are in a history class or government class in the audience that probably will face ACTs and SATs in the future. The Common Core and Alaska standards are, the next step are those assessments. So, they have realigned the SAT and ACT along with the state or national expectations somewhat. So, we can discuss for days the appropriateness and appropriateness. Students inevitably are the ones, like someone shared with the assessment in front of them, or the assessment going to come in front of them to get into colleges or their next lives. So, it is what it is right now, and we can, you know, discuss that. It is coming quickly. The state did not train us except for about two weeks ago. And so, as we do get the information, we do try to get it out into the people who have to actually answer. I mean, really, teachers and principals in schools are the front line, and they're the ones facing this. So, the anxiety is high without a doubt. It is where we are right now in, in our system. If you look, we did request, Alaska also makes up, you know, over a third, if you will, of the kids being assessed, so, or regular, Anchorage does. So, we did request, of the 70.5 students in the state, we make 27,000 of them and 20 kids, we did request to have those taken a look at, can you separate them, similar to Dr. Wood did with his music about what is Anchorage and then what is everyone else? Right now, we're part of the state as well, we're part of the state mean, we're, we're in that denominator, if you will, as well. So, this is where we stand. There isn't anyone, I think, in our state that would jump up and down for joy, and that's what we're faced with. So, what have we done? It's not a surprise. We knew probably that this would occur because of some of the other assessments that we keep our eye on, for which our kids can give it to us, and Kathy did a great job in demonstrating what a formative assessment is. That's really what teachers use all the time, bless you in the audience, teachers use all the time in their classes. They take information as they teach, they give an assessment or a quiz to formatively understand where are students. And then there are those interim, which are similar to the benchmarking that happen a few times during the year, MAP and curriculum measures, to see if what we taught, kids are on track. And so, there was an inappropriate, or it was inappropriately administered, the benchmarking assessment this year. There is what's called a discontinuation clause, which wasn't shared with the coaches, which then wasn't shared with all of the teachers, that, similar, if you, if you take kind of a swim lesson, it's looking at, this is what we're going to learn by the end of the year, what do you know now? In the essence, that we don't have to teach what kids know now. So, saying and providing, give them 20 minutes to sit there, that, that is inappropriate. There's actually a discontinuation clause, and mid-year it'll be on computers, it should have been this time. The textbooks and things came in a week before school started. So, we are under, you know, this similar operations in regard to support at, teacher support here at the district office as well as teacher support in the classrooms. So, the discontinuation wasn't utilized, it is utilized for AIMS Web, and MAP is utilized. Basically, when anxiety happens in kids, they, it just cuts off automatically, it's an algorithm in the system. And so, mid-year, that, that actually will be utilized. Not all schools had problems, it was last week, one of the first grade teachers, Lisa, I remember her name because you could see her name, mentioned that it was paused, and that pause was because why is there so much trouble? And it was noticed that it was back on the issues that happened in the training. And so, folks didn't know what they should have known, and so we take responsibility for that. Do you have the other slides? Okay. So, we knew that it wasn't a surprise. Here is math. Is this the math one, or this is the English? This is mathematics. And right there on the side, it says that. And there we have greater achievement in our elementary level at third grade, and it dissipates by 10th. So, we know that in math, there is a question, and that therefore, in the Go Math program to look at where are the parts that kids are missing, you look for trends formatively instead of waiting for this assessment. If we were to wait every year for the next September, we would have missed the boat in the teaching. So, again, this is the science, and you do notice that it is a bit higher. These are the prior assessments. So, in this year, science teachers around the state are creating the new science standards, and there'll be a new assessment. And I would like to say that in, in the State of Alaska, 84 Alaskan teachers set the standards, or set the cut scores for the standards, as well as in our district, over 60 teachers in K1 and 2 selected the curriculum. So, it, it's, while it feels like things are being done to people, the goal is to really engage people, but certainly the communication and the training time, somebody mentioned, is, has slipped away. Time is what we don't have enough of. There were three days prior to school, but some folks shared the mandated training happened as well. So, it is a lot moved into a little bit of time. What we do know, we already did know, that's why we say it isn't a surprise, MAP is a nationally-normed assessment, and it's given in the middle school right now, and this is middle school information. And we had one school, Greening Middle School, that is above the national average in student growth, and all of our other middle schools are not. And this is the growth measure in, from where they start at the beginning year to the end. It isn't a matter of not teaching, it is looking at what do kids need to know when they hit these assessments? What is our state and nation ask them to know? And if this is something we choose, you know, to turn our backs on, I think we have a responsibility to teach the Alaska standards as well as the Alaska Anchorage standards. This is fourth grade NAEP, this is a national assessment, and again, this is just to demonstrate the work we need to do, it's, we are all responsible. I'm an educator for 27 years, this is where we are. They changed the game on us in the middle, and the expectations have risen, and so we have to adjust our schools to meet those needs if we are to meet the standards. And so, you see here, the lower percentage of the nation in NAEP, we're about 46th to 48th, I believe, in reading and math in fourth grade. NAEP is the National Assessment of Education Progress, and it is given to just a portion of schools, I'm not, it's a random selection, so some of our schools participate, some don't, but they come in nationally, assessors come in and, and kind of take over and do it. We don't really run this assessment, and it's in fourth and eighth grade. So, we're not surprised for the state assessments, we're, you know, we, we look to see where we can improve, but at the same time, we're not looking to change our, you know, part of our education is the arts. We, we had a presentation on the arts, and we know that the importance of the fine arts in achievement is evident. So, I know that this board hasn't spoken to eliminating just to raise a test score, we don't talk about that, we talk about that these test scores have kids behind them, and that we, we simply want to help kids. One of the celebrations is here are the, when the schools and teachers focused and had had those conversations in regard to improvement. This was the four-year graduation rate the year before last, up to 2016. And last year, the rate was, oh, these are the student groups. As you know, in 2016, we had about an 80% district-wide, but if we looked at our student groups, we really had some areas for which our community and our student groups and our teachers were concerned. Students with disabilities, Alaska native and economically disadvantaged. Other groups that you heard from tonight were, during the MEACAC, were African-American, Black, as well as our Polynesian. Those were some of the areas for which, the student groups in which we struggled, that they came during the work session to share. And these were the indicators that what we, the achievement we wanted, we weren't getting. Again, it's not about the F, any kind of, we had a lot of talk about Q, and shoot, you could just Q-Q in to change every grade. It's really not about the grade. It's about what happens in our classrooms that makes certain groups more difficult in learning? Because we know that that's not intellect, and that's not innate. So how is it that we come to the classroom every day as kids and teachers and schools? And the preliminary four-year graduation rate is really good news. I know that the schools and staff have worked on really looking at each of their individual schools and working through those processes. And if you look at last year's graduation rate, overall, it improved to 81.4%. So it did increase from 79.7. But the areas that the schools reported focusing, they're placing their focus and really working towards achievement, African-American increased about 5%, Alaska native about 8%, Pacific Islander was about 6%, 6-7%, as well as students with disabilities. So these were some of the groups for which you've heard testify in front of you last year, that were dissatisfied with the achievement of their children. And so I wanted to share that the schools and staff, when they roll up their sleeves, they do make a difference in children's lives, and these are that many more students graduating our schools. And the rigor wasn't changed. We didn't lower our standards. We worked with kids and talked to kids and found ways that we can move kids forward. So this is really a celebration of sorts in regard to the work done at our schools. So with that, there were some other items that were requested by board members for which to provide some insight, and one of those was...
Are we still going to be on the testing?
Sure. We can answer questions there and then go to the other items. Absolutely.
You have a question, David?
Yeah. The number one question I've got from the public over the last week or so is, what do we think the reason for the PEAKS assessment? As our students progress through the grades, they seem to be less and less successful to a certain degree, and why? I was asked.
Through the chair, you know, one way of thinking is that the test isn't assessing what we're teaching. And maybe the value of what we're teaching is different than the test, and so this test doesn't show what we're teaching. It's not about not teaching. I mean, teachers work. If you go by our schools on weekends, there's cars there. They're at night. Exactly what was said tonight is happening. But the difference between what those assessments are and what is expected of kids. So we can decide as a community, we don't agree with what should be assessed and what kids should learn, but then the kids are held in the middle of that. And see, this is an adult conversation with these assessments that are going on with kids. And so therein lies kind of our tricky situation in regard to this whole evening of not liking assessments, not liking what's happened with the assessments, but in truth, how fast it's coming. So I would liken it perhaps to not the efforts in teaching, not the quality of teaching, but the targets for which we're teaching. Certainly, I shared, some primary teachers shared with me personally, that they're asked to teach at a, more than they think the kids should learn at first grade. So we're at odds with what our standards are with what we believe we should be teaching. And again, that holds then these scores in the midst. You have to look at it as there's a difference between the nation, that these are national standards technically. They're not just specific to us. So I wouldn't say, as these demonstrate, that kids aren't getting smarter in our system or they're failing more. I would say that there's more of a mismatch between what's expected of them and what is actually occurring in the classroom. So it's not a judgment statement. It's just a, they probably don't meet. And that's one of the concerns that was voiced here tonight in regard to thinking it's inappropriate as well. So how we answer that and how we address that really is, I mean, I work for a board, and so the goal, and that was shared with me, and that's shared quite a bit by community groups, is why aren't our children succeeding? And so that's what we did. We looked at the system, and there isn't time for kids, and there certainly isn't time for teachers as well. And we heard that tonight, that there's just no time. We do feel like we're doing a lot, so.
Voice?
Thank you. I had one comment to board member Donnelly, and then a question about the PEAKS testing. Another chart that goes just like that is our children's attendance. So that's another one that we need to work on, but there's, I think you'll find a pretty close direct correlation to those numbers. Regarding the PEAKS testing, I wanted to just get a clarification. If I heard correctly, that over the summer, this big group of educators got together and did all the cut scores and stuff like, did that just happen over this summer, this last summer we just finished? So we gave a test in the spring that we just determined how to grade in the summer?
I'll answer that. No, they knew how to grade it. It was just setting the cut scores in regard to how many would you have to get? What is the content you would have to know to be proficient? What's the content you would have to know to be? They knew the answers to the test. It's just that they set the cut scores. Now, the SBAs' cut scores were really, really low. See, so basically, they said to, if you were to really know this standard, this, these are the problems that were presented that you would need to know. And they set those to be in line with the expectations of the state.
I might need a, maybe an offline conversation. I just, I'm getting, I don't understand how that gets set after. I think that as, you know, questions get answered, we already know the answers, they get X amount wrong, we already know what that equates to. I don't understand the, I guess I just don't understand the process. I'd like to understand it.
Yeah. And that's a good question. It's really saying, the kids took an assessment, and then we say, what is the minimum we'll accept in what they got correct or incorrect to call them proficient?
Why didn't we know that before we gave them the test? Or the state, not we, but why didn't the state have that already answered?
You know, I think it has to do a little bit about how the kids did too. And in the SBAs, what they did was ratchet down those expectations over time.
Okay. Thank you.
And through the president, it is a complicated process that the testing company actually goes through, and it's a complicated process to get all those things in line. We can certainly get more information from the state to make that more clear for the board.
And this assessment was just started a year ago, so that's why. Yeah. I mean, that has something to do with it as well. But, you know, it's really, teachers that do that are, you know, they apply, they're pretty sharp in their thing, but it's really, they have great discussions in regard to, if we were to say you were proficient, what would that look like? And they go back and forth. It's not an easy process. So those that participate, it is, it's pretty rough work. Yeah. Yeah. But that's a great question. And we may see, as SBAs did, after they came out initially, they lowered this cut scores for SBAs over time. And I don't know if they'll do it for this assessment, but it'll be what they hear from the state. But I wanted folks to know that the first thing that came out was, these must be wrong cut scores, these must be wrong assessments. But if you look at other things that are done nationally and normed nationally, they're not any different. We could have the question, should we even assess at all? That's a different question to have, but right now, it's the law. Mr. Hallman.
And I did, just for clarity, the PEAK assessment is not normed to any other test, is it?
No.
So that's part of, to me, it's kind of free-floating out there. If I can offer like a real quick concrete example, if you had all the kids run a mile and timed them, you would do an assessment that way, you'd have the data, but then you can still sit down and decide what's an appropriate amount of time, if you're considering a certain amount of time to be sufficient. And that might be something that you would rightway do after you had gathered the data rather than before.
And to add on that, it is a norm referenced, or it's not a norm reference, it's a criterion reference test, which means they look at each criteria to pass, similar to what, you know, running and what your times would be, would be the criterion. They actually discuss, what is it that kids really should know, and is this one something that would make them advanced or below, or is this an absolute that they must know in eighth grade? Those are the kinds of conversations they have, actually. So that's it right now, unless there's other questions. We can go on to the other, some requests from board members to speak. Okay. Well, thank you. The other two items, I'm going to request that Dr. Strumpler come forward. And they are in regard to a couple of other information that's come up in regard to debate. We wanted to follow up with that. We did do a look into the debate program to see, and also middle school schedules. And of course, just as a review, the middle school's schedules changed as we lost teachers through our budgeting process last year, lost all staff quite a bit, as you heard the one member talking about, Ms. O'Neill or O'Neill, at the very end, where she talked about principals, tutors, teachers, security guards, administration from this building. So there's been quite all levels that have been reduced. And one of the middle schools' decisions to change the schedule to go to the eight-period day was to continue with a team prep time as well as a personal prep time. So that was one of the processes used to keep that for middle school teachers after we had heard the testimony. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kirsten in regard to middle school schedules and advisory, as well as debate.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through the president to the board, I just wanted to update you first on debate, because that was a topic at a previous board meeting. In the previous school year, there were nine of our middle schools that were offering debate as a course during the school day. And this year, there are seven of our middle schools that are participating in a course during the day labeled as debate. So we're fairly close to last year in terms of the amount of offerings that are in our middle school level. And there are three schools that are also offering debate as an after-school club as well, in addition to during the day. And so when you look at the schools that are offering debate or not offering debate this year, as Dr. Bishop indicated, a lot of it has to do with either course requests by students, whether they're interested in the course or not. Some of it has to do with scheduling concerns and fitting it into students' schedules. And so there's a whole variety of reasons why a schooler may or may not choose to offer it. But I believe we're doing a fairly good job of trying to keep that program alive for our students at the middle school level. So before I move on to...
Advisory. Any other questions?
I just, if there's any questions about that, I could take those. Otherwise, I'll go on to MTSS and our eight-period day. So during the construction of the eight-period day, many people developed what they are calling advisory, which is not typically, a typical advisory as you would see it. It's considered an intervention period of some sort. And it has to do with our MTSS model that we're incorporating into our schedules this year. So in that eight-period day, students take their four core subjects, they take their electives. That is a requirement of that eight-period day. And then they also, if they are in a tier-two or three intervention period or course, they do an additional course in either language arts or math. If they are an on-track kid, what we would consider a tier-one student, that's an opportunity for that student to take enrichment courses. So they either can participate in debate as an option, they could participate in an extra music class, they may be doing social emotional learning during that time. It's a period of time that those students can excel in an area that they would like to continue to excel in. So that's kind of, that's an update on the advisory at the middle level.
And what's happening, though, is that, and Kirsten, it was, the question was timely. She's meeting with middle school principals tomorrow. What should go on there is the question. Some schools have just placed students and had teachers teach kind of new items that they'd like to teach in interests that were easy, and then others created like an advisory so they feel like they're not going anywhere and there's just no structure. Or it is a set advisory where they were working on SEL, which our program that we've had as well in the past is just really one day a week. And so she's working with them to kind of rename. Some schools struggled with it, and other schools moved with it. So we're just working to help out, to figure that out.
Yeah. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with all the middle school principals to troubleshoot some of the things that have taken place this year. And it's a new schedule and a new program for middle school, so there's going to be bumps along the road, but we're working on getting it up and running at all the schools well.
And am I understanding it right that for some students, they're in a class during advisory?
Some maybe, yeah. So for students who, for example, are struggling in reading, based on their map scores that they take at the mid-level, those students would then be placed in an additional language arts reading course to make up the difference.
You're saying tier-one students might be in a debate class or a different class?
They could be, yeah. Depending on the school model, because every middle school has looked at that period somewhat differently as an enrichment period for those tier-one kids. So some students may be taking an additional course, like debate. Some students may have what they call advisory, where there's a school-wide program. For example, there is a CITC grant at Mere Lake Middle School where all students are participating in what they call advisory, and they participate in that CITC program. So it's a little bit different at every school.
But to that end, though, we're revisiting it, and the principals that are sharing feedback that it's not going well are going to get new ideas from their peers about how they've worked it out. But that was a change that was selected in regard to keeping somewhat of a middle school schedule as far as allowing people to collaborate, but not, it is a different schedule for kids and more movement and longer periods if they block schedule. So it is different, but it was changed in an effort to continue the individual prep time and the teaming prep time. So with that, we, these are all difficult conversations. The conversation for which we had just prior is difficult. It's, again, you know, if you looked on my learning plan at all the different state-mandated requirements, as well as now we have new curriculum, as well as state testing, and all the things for which, as a school system, we are, need to look at, it does, especially in a new year, hit us. And I will charge staff, as well as myself, to reach out to schools, to work with teachers, and see what we can do. We feel like we've been pretty good with that, with Mr. Claymire assisting with the grading, as well as the principals and working with the ELA, trying to be responsive. But in essence, no excuses. There is a lot out there in very little time. But again, the end goal is for student success when they leave us, that they actually can do what the world is asking of them. Thank you. That concludes the superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Next, we have our Student Advisory Board representative report. Do you have something for us?
Okay. So we had our first meeting, September 7th, the KCC. And first of all, we just welcomed everyone, did a few icebreaker activities, got our high schoolers involved with our middle schoolers. We then did our first school reports of the year, which is where each school just goes and says what their ongoing activities are or their upcoming activities are. We then met with our Senior Director of Student Nutrition, who has been so helpful in reaching out to the Student Advisory Board this year to get student input on food for lunch. And then lastly, we gave out applications for President, Vice President, Secretary, Personal Relations, and Parliamentarian. And elections will be held at our next meeting on September 21st. That's all.
Great. Next one is committee reports, and we'll start with finance since we just had it.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet this afternoon at 2:30. The topics, we covered two of them over that hour. We talked about different versions from a presentation and what kind of substance we wanted in monthly financial reports. That's going to be a...
That's going to be a new thing for the board, as right now, we're mandated for quarterly reports, but we would like to get more reports. We want to see where we're doing much more often. We also had a presentation on, from internal audit, on elementary cash handling, and there should be reports for any board members that were not at that meeting. And then, we have the date of our next meeting, October 9th at 2:30 in Room 150, and the topics probably still yet to be developed, but we're going to try and fine-tune probably a trio of audit topics for this upcoming year, as well as what maybe order and how many deep-dive topics that we'd like to go into as a Finance Committee.
Thank you. Communications?
Thank you, Madam President, or Madam President. Our meeting is tomorrow from 11:00 to 12:00. The upcoming agenda items, including the AASB resolutions. Anybody who has a concern regarding any of the proposed resolutions that we all got copies of, this would be a good time to raise those. Have any ideas for other resolutions we're going to be offering? Tomorrow will be the time to raise those and be considered by the committee for recommendations to the full board. We're going to talk about lobbying direction and legislative luncheon. I will note that I get a very favorable response from co-chairs of Anchorage Caucus so far, and to the idea of possibly having it at their offices this year. It might encourage more attendance, we're hoping. And then, we have one piece of business that we'd like to take care of now regarding the nomination for the AASB Carl Rose Governance Award, and the committee was recommending Kathleen Plunkett, but we wanted to make sure that if anybody else was interested in this, will be nominated this award, that they would have an opportunity to express that at this time.
Is there anybody? Okay.
So, if it's appropriate, this time, I would move that the board approve the nomination of Kathleen Plunkett for the AASB Carl Rose Governance Award.
We'll do a voice, we'll do a voice vote on that, and we'll start with you, Elise.
I guess I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
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 Okay, I think that was unanimous.
That would conclude the report.
Congratulations.
And then, we have...
Complaints?
Governance, sorry.
That's okay. It's been a while since we've met. So, we have, again, a couple of non-action items for the 1,000 and the 2,000, and they will all come together at the end of the, it's the last item, it's item number 14, at the end, hopefully in January. If we were really aggressive, it would be December, but I think January is more reasonable because we'll approve it all at once. We will meet on Wednesday, September 13th, from 3:30 to 5:00 in Room 150, and the section is the 4,000 policy, which is personnel.
Okay. I think that concludes our committee reports. Are there any conferences or anything anybody's been to? All right. So, at this time, we're going to move on to our consent agenda.
Hold on. Are you ready for me?
Yes, I am.
Okay. A move to approve the consent agenda items. Item number two, ASD Memorandum Number 35 Personnel Report. Item number three, August 7th, 2017 Work Session and Executive Session Minutes. Item number four, August 7th, 2017 School Board Meeting Minutes.
Say a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any... So, are we ready to vote? We, I tell you what, before we move to action items, why don't we take just a five-minute break? It's been a long meeting, and we'll just take a quick five-minute break, and we'll be back here at 9:01. Thank you.
Bob, whoever turned on the air, thank you.